All right, let's call the meeting to order. Let's see. Mark Girman is excused, he's alternate, we don't need to seat anybody. First item, consideration of the meeting minutes from June 23rd, 2021. I understand those aren't complete, so is there a motion to skip over those?
No.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I have three. Continuing on the business.
Mark Girman is just joining.
Mark Girman is here, and also joining us Gene Bowden in JWS. Hi, Mark.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Mark.
SPI 2021, MAP 124, lot 40, Loon Mountain Recreation Corporation discussion regarding Loon Bridge parking area. On August 28th, 2011, Tropical Storm Irene dumped 10 inches of rain over Lincoln, causing the east branch of the Pemigewas River to flood and undermine the bridge rebutments of the International Bridge to the Loon Mountain Ski Area, rendering Route 112, the Kangamegas Highway, impassable east of the resort. The New Hampshire DOT closed the bridge on August 28th, 2011, and then a portion of the bridge collapsed on August 31st, 2011. CLP Loon Mountain LLC, DVA Loon Mountain Recreation Corporation was the owner of Loon Mountain Ski Area at that time. At issue was the International Bridge on Loon Mountain Road from the Kangamegas Highway across the east branch of Pemigewas River to the Loon Mountain Ski Area. The New Hampshire DOT replaced the washed out portion of the bridge with a temporary bridge structure, and then a permanent replacement was designed with funds provided by FEMA, the state of New Hampshire, and the Town of Lincoln. The replacement bridge could not be constructed in the same location as the old bridge. In order to build in the new location, the Town of Lincoln and CLP Loon Mountain LLC swapped parcels of land so the bridge could be constructed in the new location. The land swap was submitted to the planning board at a planning board meeting on March 28th, 2014, and approved by the planning board. Review of documentation provided by Loon Mountain Recreation Corporation about former parking areas near the bridge that were relocated to the swap plans. All right, who's given the presentation here?
It's the project manager.
Okay.
So in your packets, there's a bunch of stuff, but the first thing is this land swap agreement, which is, I don't know, 20 pages or something. Just to kind of recap this, that land swap agreement was signed by the Board of Selectmen and has a two-step process that we agreed to with, what was it at the time, CLP Loon Mountain. The first step was that they were going to deed the land that the town needed to build the bridge over to the town. That deed is, it kept the packet order, that's the second thing in your packet. You can see it's a quick claim deed, seven pages. It was recorded and there's a page number on that. The second part of this land swap agreement was that the town was going to deed over to CLP Loon Mountain two parcels that the old bridge was located on. And that went through the whole process of coming before the planning board, two public hearings with the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen signed that deed, and then that deed was held in escrow because according to this land swap agreement, the CLP Loon was not going to accept them until after the bridge, the new bridge was built, the old bridge was taken down, and they had a chance to inspect the property, assuming they wanted to make sure that nothing was damaged or contaminated or anything, but whatever. They had the right to inspect it before they actually recorded the deed. So that deed was held with, at Hastings Malia, the town's attorneys, until the bridge was done. What seems to have happened is that people forgot to take that step number two and actually record that deed. So it is, in fact, not been recorded. It's still sitting in escrow over at Hastings Malia. It's signed, fully signed, but again, it's made up to CLP Loon Mountain. And in discussing this with Hastings and Malia, they said, "Everybody seems to have thought that the deed had already been recorded. Everyone seems to have forgotten that there was a second step that had to be accomplished before that could be done. At the time, it seems clear that everyone intended for it to happen, given the fact that we have a signed deed in our file. We agree that the BOS should ask the new owner, Loon/Boyn, if they are interested in taking the deed to the parcels, and if they are, proceed with consummating the transaction according to the agreement. Therefore, it seems to be premature for the planning board to have this on their agenda tonight. The planning board could be informed that the transfer has not taken place and the reason why, which I just gave, and that further discussion should be postponed until the ownership is transferred." So that's where we stand. I tell you, I learned about this last night, totally. So it wasn't yet, I have to say, and Carol did too. I mean, I was in here at, I don't know what time, with you, 7:00?
Yeah.
6:30, 7 o'clock at night? And that's when I learned about it.
Okay, so my copy of the land swap agreement has been countersigned by CLP Loon. Have they in fact signed a copy somewhere?
Do they do that when they accept it?
Yeah, but well, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay. But the deed that is a result of that land swap agreement is signed.
Signed by the selectmen?
No, no. The quick claim deed that's been recorded, that is the first land swap, in this land swap agreement,
Okay.
was signed by
This is parcel.
Joe Sherman, senior vice president of CLP Loon Mountain.
So this is parcel, this deed in parcel three over to you, this first deed?
Correct.
That's the parcel that the bridge sits on now?
Correct.
You needed that for the
We could not, we could not construct the bridge or get state or federal funding until we owned the land.
Yep.
So that's kind of the reason this was set up, the way it was, with a two-stage land swap. They gave us the land we needed to build the bridge. We gave them the land they needed, we needed to swap for it, but that was held in escrow until the bridge was done.
All right, do you want to have any questions, Paul?
Yeah. So why, why do we need to wait? I don't understand why we need to wait. I mean, if it goes to CLP Loon, which it was what it was supposed to do, and then it was sold to someone else, doesn't it go to their successor and assign it after that anyway? So why not just have it recorded anyway?
That'd be my contention.
Well, they don't
What, have to give it
They could protest it.
Huh?
They could protest it because, you know, they don't sign the deed. Sell us, which is the town, would sign the deed.
So will it have to be a whole new land swap, quick claim deed made?
The only thing with the deed would be they would change the name to the successor or assign, which I don't know what the technical name is. It's Boyn Loon Mountain Rec, whatever, whatever the official name is, that's the assign, or successor, I should say, would be who that deed needs to get changed. Other than that, no, the deed is good the way it's written.
Based on advice of council, we should just put on this, I would think.
That would be my suggestion.
So I mentioned to Carol, we shouldn't even come in tonight for this one.
Well
We got to know until last night, though.
We can't just schedule, we can't just meet outside of this meeting to cancel this meeting. Attend the meeting to cancel it.
But one thing I've always understood, if you have an parcel of land, you have an agreement signed to that parcel of land, you sell the parcel to somebody else, the agreement goes to the new person buying the land. Wouldn't it be the same thing in this scenario?
Correct.
You're talking about this land swap agreement goes to the property.
Yes.
Goes to the property, not like
I did have one other comment.
Yes, you're correct, and that's what we're doing.
But they want to make sure, we're going to have to make sure that the chain of title is okay. So for instance, if I was going to buy it 20 years from now, you know, I would see it going from CLP to CRVI, South Peak TRS, Inc., and then I would see, I would be looking for a transfer to the
The successor.
CLP, but it wouldn't show up in the right name at the right time. So, you know, we'll have to figure out how to handle that. It's not up to us, but
Could you just set the county seat with an attachment on it, saying this is a housekeeping cleanup?
Yeah. I mean, fixing the deed isn't a big deal to
No, they just have to make sure that it'll, they'll be findable in the chain of title.
Correct.
But if you look at Carol's analysis, and that doesn't jog with any of the information that we have in here.
That's correct.
So the town tax map
Is not correct.
The town tax map is not correct? Are we sure that's a tax map?
This is what it was, yeah, I, I don't think it's correct.
Because the town tax map shows the town owning three quarters of that parking lot.
Of the beach lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we own three quarters of the beach lot.
It's been that way for, I'm just saying, the town tax, I don't know where that came from. Someone must have
Mark's getting questions.
Jay does.
Jay does. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Well, sorry, I thought I'd, I thought I'd just chime in on some of that stuff, because I heard a couple things. And the first was a question that I wanted to answer for Jim, which was, "There is a signed land swap agreement between the town and Loon. I have it on my desktop and I forwarded it to Carol yesterday." So the land swap agreement was executed, just to make sure you're aware of that per your question. And then I guess the second would be to Paul's note. I got the, some of the documents the other day as well, preparing for the call today. And that was an item that we worked on, I think, two years ago or so. We had that land surveyed, we had the research done, both the town and Loon paid for that, and we have recorded the surveyed map that depicts what is actually owned there by Loon, and then the property west of it, between here and Riverfront, I believe it is, that's owned by the town, which was, is what Paul is seeing on that, on that map there. So at some point in time, the tax map is just, it got inaccurate. And there's a few, I mean, there's a few inaccuracies in that map elsewhere in town, too.
Who's responsible for updating this map? How often do they do it?
Well, we send them deeds and plans, you know, the tax mapping program. We only update it once a year.
He says, he just said it's been two years since they changed all this.
Well, I think there are parts of this that might be correct, you know, like the location of the bridge and the piece itself, but, but the, when, I don't think that they ever did, they did it as part of this process. They didn't do a title search about the remaining stuff, and I don't really know how that stands, so.
Well, as
Actually, as I understand, we did a title search and everything through the engineering firm. And to clarify, the item was brought, you know, the research and recording and all of that, you know, takes time. So I think Carol had, I think the town received that map that Horizons created, February maybe, Carol, or December, I don't know.
Yeah, we, they, it's been sent to the tax mappers, but, you know, I, this is probably not reflected here.
In fact, my dad
You have a little disclaimer at the
These maps are totally inaccurate anyway. It shows an island by the bridge, no longer an island. That island was wiped out July 1st, 1973, when first flood, first that Loon Mountain Bridge, they put a roadway along Loon Mountain Park Lot up to the bridge, put a new economy in. We had a choice, put a new bridge or repair the old one. The old one's about 500,000 less to put a new bridge in. That's why it didn't get replaced. But that island was never recreated, it's now a parking lot in Loon Mountain.
Well, this is, this is the Google overlay.
The Google map is wrong. That is, if that's some pre, that island was wiped out, 1973, July 1st.
Right.
Okay, Jay, do you have anything else to add?
No, thank you. I just thought I'd comment before we got too far along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
All right, so do we want to continue to date specific, or just re-notice when this is all taken care of?
I think we re-notice, because it doesn't sound like you're, no one knows when we're going to meet again.
Okay.
First, in September, September.
Oh, we don't know when it's going to be.
Okay.
Anyway, so Jay, Jay will get together with the Board of Selectmen and figure out what you want to do.
Yep.
Ask another question? Actually, sorry.
If anyone else, if anyone else has any questions for Jay?
I think he wants to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you want to ask
I have another
Go ahead.
So what I heard OJ say was that the advice of the attorney is to put off this meeting and decisions till later. I'm just trying to understand what the actual meeting was about.
I think some people
It's a continuation, but it, it was a continuation, but I thought we had a conclusion to the meeting back in April.
April 14th, yeah, we did, there was, there was a vote, a motion made in, on April 14th. I didn't vote for it, but
Right, this is for the new ski lot?
No, this was, this was for the parking.
Parking, okay.
So what we determined at the time was that we, we needed to do an as-built map and submit that to the file. I mean, I'm summarizing here, but, so I'm just curious as to what we need to continue. So I
One of the things, one of the things that it was supposed to do, I think, Jay, that I don't know that's been done and probably needs to be looked at, is it was supposed to be recorded in the, in the land swap agreement. And unless there's a revised land swap agreement, I don't see the language in there about the parking on the other side. I could have kept that to myself, but
But if I may ascertain, if you lost the parking lot on the other side, Paul
If you look in the minutes
I know, in this piece, another meeting that did come through, Loon Mountain, about parking over there, different planning board meeting.
The motion was to amend the land swap agreement with as-built plan showing parking area for 50 spaces. My member Robinson, second, and my vice chair, Shania. Porta one, I'm voting save and all. So it's supposed to be put in the land swap agreement. I don't know who does that. Is it Loon, or is that the town? Does that?
I think it's much different, long as they both town sign on it.
Both towns? So that would need to be
Okay.
And that may be something the attorney needs to look at, if you want to have that parking area over there. Because it should be, it should be in the land swap agreement, and it should be shown in a plan. And there's no, there's no plan that shows it, and there's no language in the agreement.
Well, yeah, it says right here, Mr. Scambio stated that the simplest approach is to reserving land and lay it out on a map as an as-built plan, which could then be attached to the amended land swap agreement.
Correct, and then the motion was made.
Yeah, page 47.
So neither one of those have been done, so probably
Well, that's not true. The map
Go ahead, Jay.
The map is done, and it is in the hands of the town, so I guess I'm, what I'm hearing is there's clerical piece that needs to be worked through where we need to make an exhibit, an addition to the land swap agreement we were just talking about? That
I didn't see the Carol, did you send us a copy of the amended map? Copy of the amended map? Jay seems to think that was
Carol sent it to you all on 6/21. I think.
Now does it show the parking lot?
Jay, what is
It doesn't show a parking lot, Jay.
Jay, are you looking at the map itself? Can you just peek at your copy here? Does it say on the bottom sheet, 1 of 2, in 2011-071?
Um
Does that sound right?
Hold on, it's, I'm going to zoom in here.
Just asking
At the bottom of the map, by Horizons, completed April 2021, project 21112.
We don't have
And I was just referring to, Carol, you had sent, you had sent it to planning. We received attached documents from Loon Mountain Resort. You sent the map, which I included separately, and then the map with a letter of explanation.
I think I sent that to Loon
I've never seen it.
Well, let me go, what's the date again, Jay, and let me go print it out.
6/21 at 2:53 p.m.
2:53, okay.
Just thinking, these are French originally, today's a holiday. It's the old day.
This is?
It's the old day, it started the French Revolution.
Matt?
Well, the parking lot on the east side of the bridge, Loon Mountain came in a few months after that, get permission for, put a parking lot there with grass.
Yeah, they did it in April. I don't, I was not favoring it. Fifty minutes right here. Carol's under some minutes tonight.
Is that it wrong?
I think so. You want me to screen share that, so it's unrecorded?
Does that show the parking lot, or is that to show the boundary?
This is the parking lot extension.
Loon Mountain Beach Lot. The beach lot's on the other side. Extends to the parking lot for approximately 50 cars here. I don't have that. So, so the entrance to that parking lot is in the town right of it. All of the curb, all of the curb cuts that go into the two beach lots are now, are in the town right of it. On town, on land. Am I correct?
Was all discussed at that April meeting?
No, not that. I just
Yes, it was.
Are you sure it was?
About the entrance system? Well, I got the thing right here, I read it, I didn't see anything in there.
Do you want me to screen shit, that's what's on recording, so, elaborate or it doesn't matter.
Okay, go ahead.
Mark probably, Mark will be able to see it if I screen share.
right, so I was saying that the curb cuts are, for the, the three curb cuts, one going to the east, one going to the west, and one off of Route 112, are all on town-owned property. And there's, there's nothing in the land swap agreement or anything that says that Loon has that access to those. Should, should there be?
Paul, Paul, first of all, the one off of 112 into the beach lot has been there well before any bridge was swapped, probably before the last bridge was taken down. So you're stirring up the pot, just to stir up the pot. We already discussed all of the last time. We discussed accessing that area for parking via that curb cut on the east side of the road and the creation of an area for approximately 50 spots.
You're correct, we discussed
The curb, curb on the west of the road was absolutely there during the planning for the current bridge that we drive across.
Correct. And it was the town, and it was the town at that point as well. That's, I was making a statement, Jay, I wasn't saying it was right or wrong.
You were insinuating something.
Are you going to tell me what I was doing, Jay? Really? You're pretty good, Jay. You can read my mind, you're doing real good. All I was saying, I made a statement, said that the curb cuts that accessed the new parking area with 50 cars on the east and the one going to the driveway on the west and Route 112 were on town-owned property. That's all I said. And then you jump in and start going ballistic, so I appreciate it that you wouldn't do that.
Nobody, nobody is playing ballistic.
I just talked one at a time here, I mean
Well, I'm just looking
Why don't you speak, and then someone else wants to read bottom, they can speak.
I made a comment as a board member, that's all.
Do you have anything else?
Did you guys all find your map? I mean, it's in there.
I don't find anything.
It's June
What's on? Lot extension? That's totally correct.
Well, anyway, I printed it out again.
I couldn't read it. It's a fucking page underneath mine.
They sent it as soon as Jay signed to me.
I think I got it, is it?
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't get that. Okay, thanks.
It's attached to
You don't know, just like it. Yeah, okay.
Email, and said, "Hi, everyone, here it is."
Sorry, everyone said, "Fuck." Said, "You fuck."
2/41.
Well
Anyway
Must have missed it.
Trouble maker, trouble maker.
Oh, it didn't get to me, I wonder why.
What did you want to say? You want to add something?
No.
Jay, you want to add anything?
Nope, just listening to what else we need to figure out.
I'm going to call the board to see if anyone thinks we need to have another meeting on this. Joe?
No move. I agree to what you should.
Okay, okay.
I think the process should be the Board of Selectmen and representatives from Loon Mountain and attorneys get the whole deed thing settled. Once that's done, we record the deed, and I think that this plan should be attached as part of the deed, not as part of the land swap agreement, because there's no sense in recording a land swap agreement that's seven years old and is no longer relevant as soon as this deed transfer takes place. So although it's, I agree with recording this, it should go with the deed, new deed, not, not a seven-year-old, out-of-date, no longer
Just reference that in the new deed.
Okay, Jay, I don't need a hat, I agree with you.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, I agree with it.
All right, Paul?
I'm fine with it.
All right, so, all right. Anyone have anything else? All right, move on from this one. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay, for coming.
But thank you all.
I have one question, Steve.
About this?
Jay, hold on. What's that?
No, he doesn't.
Jay cooking something tonight? No, he's up in Maine.
All right. Any other business?
No, no.
Paul?
I have something. I was talking to OJ about it earlier tonight, but the South Peak Resort, I talked to the Board of Selectmen about it. The Board of Selectmen were originally going to put a hole on building new lots at South Peak. And to their consensus, they changed their mind and said that any of the lots that were sold, they were going to allow it to be built on, that were not in the high-pressure zone. However, as I brought up in the last Board of Selectmen meeting, the, what they're building in South Peak is not the same as what was supposed to be, what was approved in the master plan, what's been in South Peak Resorts' guidelines, and what the, what the basis for design is. What's been in South Peak Resorts Guidelines and what the, what the basis for design is. For example, the basis of design asked for, and the basis of design was part of the approval, it was a condition of the approval. So the basis of design says that for a single-family house over there at South Peak. They were going to have four-bedroom units.
Okay.
Four-bedroom unit. They built since twenty, since twenty-two thousand and six. They averaged somewhere between five and twelve. In the South Peak Resort Building Guidelines, they say, only supposed to have between twenty-five hundred and six thousand square feet maximum. Um, and when they, they revised it from two thousand and six.
Say it again, twenty-five hundred to six thousand square feet?
Square feet.
Okay.
And the houses that are over there, some of the houses, and Ron had sent me some information about these back a couple of months ago. Uh, the houses range from eight thousand to eleven thousand, some of the bigger ones.
Okay.
And there's, there's, there's a few more than that. So they're building. At least two thousand square feet, more than their biggest, you know, at, at a minimum. I'm not sure if this qualifies as. A, a difference from what they were approved to have, or what they said they were gonna have, and if it requires any more. Site plan review, I'm not sure. We don't issue the building permits, so the building permits for the, that the Board of Selectmen has said, go ahead and issue. What are they gonna be issued to? Are they gonna be issued for eleven thousand square foot homes? When, that's not what they said. So I, as I said, I was talking to OJ about it tonight, and I, I think that there should be some. Research done into it as to whether or not it needs to come back for the plan award, or how the new building permits are going to be issued, for what size houses.
Okay, Joe?
If they can fit the building on the property with the amount of parking, they're legal, whether it's two thousand or five thousand. But what you, we can do later on, submitting, exchange the ordinance, any building of a certain size require more, more acreage. If that was what you were trying to aim for.
Well, but they're, they're, that's not true, Joe, because the, the basis for design was a condition of approval. And there was a, there was a, an agreement between the Board of Selectmen and syntax at that time. Which since has gone to the rest of whoever bought it, their successors in the signs, and that, and that. That as well, so there, there's only so many that they can, can do. So. I mean, I think if, someone needs to look into it, because it's not, and the master plan is supposed to be recorded. Over in Grafton, and I don't know if that's ever got recorded.
Well, this is what it says. The deed says, see attached, the master plan, and there was no master plan ever recorded.
Okay. All right. I think Mark, Mark has a question here.
I, I have a question and a comment. First of all, Joe, it may be that outside of a, of a. Cut or, or a subdivision, that that's true in terms of the, your comments about lot size. But the entire area of South Peak was subject to a homeowner's agreement. And the process by which this subdivision was hived off was highly irregular. It was not reviewed. The, the sixty-three or whatever lots that were sold to the second party. Who was very close to the primary party that owned, that owned the South Peak, uh, development. This was not an arms-length transaction, it was not openly reviewed, and the review, and the homeowner's agreement was changed. With, uh, without the consent or knowledge of the South Peak homeowners. And the conditions, the minimal conditions, the setbacks, the whole thing was changed. Without anybody's consent other than the prior owner, and the only basis or standing that they had for that, allegedly, and this is all alleged. Because there are no proceedings or records or minutes of anything that happened. Is that, that there was an agreement between the prior owner and the transferee. Uh, in order to sell it, that they would craft a, a more flexible agreement, arrangement in terms of restrictions. So the, uh, responsibilities on the sixty-three lot, that attached to the sixty-three lots. That are supposed to run with the land were ignored, completely ignored. And the, and the Attorney General of the State of New Hampshire either was not informed of, of these issues. There's no evidence that they filed the modified homeowner's agreement. None of this was reviewed. This is highly improper, highly irregular, and creates great contingent liability for the town of Lincoln. And I can take that, I, I can tell you that for a fact, because I'm damaged by it, and I'm not gonna sit and let it happen without taking action about it. And the fact of the matter is that somebody should review. And we should also advise the Attorney General that we are gonna review it. And, and the business of the water tower is a separate business. It's, it's an important thing. I think, in my opinion, it's more important. Than, than the business of adequate supply of water, uh, and the number of bedrooms that Paul's bringing up is very important also. Uh, but the fact of the matter is that the whole story of the process of this is, is like nineteen thirties. It is not a two thousand and twenty-one proceedings, in my opinion, and it should be reviewed, absolutely.
You know, I'm, I don't know if the town has.
Right, I think that's more a matter between the homeowners association and AG.
Well, I mean, if, if, and the.
I disagree. I totally disagree, Jim.
And the.
The town has.
You don't talk at once. I can get follow-up comment?
Yeah, well, there's all kinds of, there are, there are, there are New Ha, there is New Hampshire legislation. Uh, that, that concerns it and should have been reviewed by the, by the Attorney General. I don't know what was reviewed and what wasn't. Because nobody has, has access to the, to the documents. But the fact of the matter is that there are conditions for such a transfer, and I don't believe those conditions were met. And one of the conditions is that the town has certain characteristics which Lincoln doesn't have. And, and the town, for example, have, have some, uh, uh, review, review of construction. Standards and quality, have a population in excess of five thousand and so on, and we don't meet those, those, those requirements. So I think the, the fact of the matter is the town does have obligations to people, even though, even people who are. Residents within a, within a subdivision. Even though the state has the authority to issue permission for the subdivision to proceed, the town does have responsibility. And it's absolutely, according to the legislation, within the purview of the planning board, to review those kinds of things. And we have notice of that. We haven't, you have notice of it right now, you all do, because I'm telling you right now. And Paul, Paul just told you the same thing right now. So Jim, your comment really is not correct.
Oh, I'm talking about the issue about the, um. The commonance being updated, about being filed.
I'm, I'm telling you, in my opinion, and you can disagree if you want, but my opinion is. That the fact that we know that that may be the case gives us cause to request. That the Attorney General review the situation at the very least, and also gives us standing to review it ourselves. If you know that you, it's one thing to not be informed and not know of it and do nothing about it. That is not our current circumstance. Our current circumstance is that this is being brought up. I didn't bring it up. Paul brought it up, and you are definitely on notice that this happened. And you have an obligation as a member of this board, the whole board does, to at least look into it and to take reasonable steps to deal with it.
What, what are we supposed to be looking into, if I may?
Well, one of the things you're supposed to be looking into is whether the division of the homeowners association into two, into two separate groups. Was, was correct, and whether the, whether the Attorney General was properly informed. All of this happened. Uh, all this happened without notification of anybody.
Can I just interject?
Go ahead.
Mark, you're, you're correct, and all I can say at this time is the Board of Selectmen is aware of it. We have, um, legal counsel looking into the matter. And there's nothing else I can say.
Well, I would strongly suggest to you at least notify the Attorney General's office that you are doing so and that you want their input.
So noted.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else, Paul?
So, with that being said, in the absence of having a tangible, um, master plan that we can look at. Who, who's, can't we ask the South Peak? Either homeowners association or whoever owns that property to provide us with a updated, revised master plan? So that, I mean, because there's gotta be one somewhere. And if they can't provide one, then I would think the planning board will have some sort of opportunity to at least, to be at least asked that question.
Don't, don't we have one? It might not be.
We have a draft.
What's that?
We have a draft.
Oh, what do we don't have is a signed copy? I mean, I've seen a master plan. I just, is it just not signed?
I don't know if it was.
I can't remember now. I don't think it's signed, and I, so I think it says draft on it.
So I mean, if, that, we should, I would think we would want to have a.
Well, I mean, if someone feels, if, if we feel they're in violation of subdivision approval, then we have to try to have.
Well, and that's one of the things to look into, and I, I don't know if that's part of what the attorneys are looking at or not. That's why I brought it up to the selectmen the other night. And I didn't really get an answer to that, but I guess I don't need one, as long as they're aware of it now.
Do you have any, Joe?
The, that's all I have on that. So, so how are we gonna, how, how does the town go forward and issue building permits? I, I didn't get that question answered.
Okay, so that's, that's not our purview, is to issue the permits?
But it, it is our purview to find out to what size and scope the town is issuing the permits to. Is it to a twenty-five hundred to six thousand square foot house? Is it a four-bedroom house as per the, the basis of design? What, what criteria are being used to issue these permits? That's the question I'm asking.
Okay.
Who do I get an answer from?
I think the question I would have is what, what, what are the laws pertaining to master plans, subdivision approvals, basis of design? That are enforceable or not? That's my question.
Or if it's, if it was added, right, if it was added on as a condition of, of the site plan approval.
Right.
Okay.
How much weight it carries.
So is that question being asked at this moment?
No, this was discussed at the last.
Selectment.
Selectment meeting two days ago, so no.
Okay.
OJ, maybe if you're, you meet the selectmen, the rest, the rest of the select board, you turn, bring it up and ask them.
We did Monday night.
So the same issue, the same scenario?
Exactly. Paul brought it up Monday night.
Okay, there's nothing with it, did that mean?
Yeah.
Do you have contact information for the current developer over there? Does anyone feel we should have a hearing to discuss whether or not they're in violation of this subdivision approval?
Well, if we don't know ourselves, how could we tell that we should get a, if I, get a request by attorney first?
We have to research it. We have to do some more research first.
I think someone should, yeah. And is it the Board of Selectmen that looks into it as part of whatever you're doing? I have no idea what the Board of Selectmen's doing, so I have no idea whether you. This would be part of what you're looking into?
The.
Or is it the planning board's responsibility to look at, into that? That's my question, I guess, after listening to Jim.
Well, technically, the selectmen are the enforcement agency.
Right, but the planning board, you know.
Can't finish the rules.
The water, the water tower that's missing, that's part of the subdivision approval.
Right.
They didn't put it in, you're right.
Enforcement of the, uh, or review for, for, for. Blinded by the master plan or the subdivision approval in the conditions thereof, I believe that's, that's planning board.
Yeah, and I agree with those. Typically, what would happen is that, I would think, is that if there's a violation of a, of a site plan process. Planning board identifies it.
We have a hearing.
And they send it to the board for enforcement.
Right. All right. So I mean, are we at that stage? If we need to get, gather some facts?
We got, I, I'm saying someone needs to do some research, is what I'm saying. And I don't know who that is.
You can't read, but Carol said, we only have a draft, but a signed copy ready to record in April.
Well, we do have a, we do have a, an agreement between the town and the developer. We have a basis of design. We have a, um, what else do we have? Do they get approval for something? We have, what does Charles ignore? What South Peak is using for design criteria? I mean, we have, we have a lot of stuff.
We basically have had two changes, the updating of the, um, guidelines for building. For the homeowners that's in front of you, Paul.
Yeah.
In two thousand thirteen, they did an amendment to the site plan, because they chose not to build all of the condo buildings and. Permission to develop those.
Maybe add a more single-family lot.
Right. So that's really, I think, the only two changes that we're aware of.
Right.
That's happened since the original master plan.
We, there is a copy of a master plan.
We've got two copies.
Okay, but it's just, it's not signed, is that correct?
Not signed.
Okay.
One says draft.
Well, we don't know if that's the one, if they're abiding by, and, and. Is it in, is it in agreements with the, the, their design guidelines?
I don't know.
I think a lot of it is.
It's not in agreement with the alteration of terrain permit.
The master plan is not?
That's what I'm saying. It just seems like there needs to be some fact-finding and information gathering before a whole lot of other permits go up. Because if you issue a permits for eleven thousand square foot homes that had. Twelve bedrooms in them, and they're not supposed to be built that way, then they, we shouldn't be giving permits for that. And just keep going, makes, makes the whole process.
Violation of subdivision approval, then, yeah.
I mean, and, and this whole thing, snowball started with where, how much water is being used over there and everything. So if, if we're continuing that, then it, it makes the situation worse, and the town can't plan for what the future water system is there, or sewer. Or fire protection, any of that. So it kinda, it leaves the town in the bowl, I think. Without having that information available to, to know what's being built over there, and what to be expected, I mean.
If that keeps going, we gotta do like we did back in the late eighties, and do a mor, put a moratorium on it.
I think I read something in the agreement about the, right, but I've read something in the agreement about fire protection in there too, and.
They're supposed to put tanks in and pressure pumps. That's never happened. The developers are supposed to do that.
So, so what do you suggest that we do? Do we?
I mean, we want to schedule a hearing in August, have them come in, see if they're in violation, we want to do some more research first.
I think we should do, to me, I would think we would do a work session and discuss it and see what we need.
I guess, in my opinion, there should be some legal input advice into this. Do you want the Board of Selectmen to do that, or do you want to ask Peter to come in?
Can we do a combination, yeah, with a board and a planning board and Peter and say, look, these questions are raised?
Why don't we have Peter take care of the selectmen issue for us? And what comes, becomes of it, they can bring it back and have discussed it open board, in open board form.
What do you, what, what do you mean?
With Peter.
The selectmen's issue?
Well, the selectmen's issue is gonna be going to the other stuff. We tell them we're gonna be meeting with them.
Okay, so that's, that's three to five years out. We don't want to wait that long.
Okay.
They want to start issuing permits, and.
Yeah, we.
The immediate question is, what can a permit be issued to? And that's something that I would think you'd have talked to council, but it might be better off to have planning board there to ask questions. After, you know, given what are the questions we are, are thinking about, and then maybe we can meet with them or do a combined, combined meeting. Work session meeting, so we can discuss it and say, so, until then, I would think that, that permits would be on hold until you can figure it out. I, I just, I mean, what do you do if, someone comes in with a eleven-bedroom house? Or a twenty thousand square foot house? What do you do?
To, to.
Well, I mean, the city's already made, they're gonna allow, allow them to continue, is that?
Well, we're gonna allow building to continue on lots that aren't in the high-pressure zone and aren't owned by the two entities. That are responsible for putting in the tank in the, in the high-pressure zone.
But we're gonna know what standard they can be built to.
Right, and I don't know, I don't know what our rights are to enforce it. And that's, the next, the next thing is to get the answers. Not to, not to restrict, change, drastically change.
How many permits are in waiting for, right now? For South Peak?
Oh, in South Peak, six maybe?
There's six houses that could be way out of what?
So that's.
Most proved.
We should have hearings that take care of us, come. We should have hearings to take care of ours, cover our butts and get things for the future. They'll create too much animosity in doing it. And that's not easy to do.
I I don't know. I I would be hesitant to take any drastic action, which that would be. We've allowed, how many houses are built up there? Thirty?
Yeah, twenty.
In the whole development?
And the whole thing is probably close to thirty-eight.
Okay, so we've allowed thirty-eight oversized houses to be built, but the next guy that comes in, we just arbitrarily say no.
Well, I don't think we arbitrarily.
No legal input, no advice from an attorney, just arbitrary. If we get advice from an attorney, look at the RSA, look at what the planning board's rights are, and say, here's why we're saying no. I would be comfortable with that. Just go out and just say, no, we're not gonna do it.
You can't.
I would just be too.
No, I, look.
I mean.
I hear you.
Okay. I mean, I think we should wait till we get advice from an attorney. We should, we should have a meeting in non-public session with the attorney. Yeah, it'd actually be a non, a non-meeting.
Needs to be straight and go, for sure. Just figure out how and what. They're just going crazy.
What do we have for the twenty-eighth?
You have a request for a waiver for stormwater. And there's something else, too.
Okay.
I don't know, I've been cracking them out so fast, I can't remember for sure.
So Jim, can we move on some more? You want to draw, take one of the long ones?
Huh?
Want to take one of the big moments, that one?
Yeah, why not? Draw before it starts raining.
You're reviewing the Rick Elliott's ponds.
Oh, yeah. How are we ever meeting in between the first Wednesday in August and have Peter Malley have that non-meeting then?
I have a CBA meeting on.
On the fourth.
Fourth. We could do it on the eleventh.
All right.
Which would be a regular meeting. You could, I don't know, come early, or you could schedule whatever might come up, starting at seven instead of six.
Have the non-meeting at five and then the regular meeting at.
Well, I don't know if everybody can make it at that.
All right, can everyone do five thirty on the?
Which day?
Eleventh.
Depends what happens. If I get a candidate or not, I may not be here. I'm gonna talk to attorney if there are some land swaps. I'm not sure if I can get across the border.
All right, well, why don't we do it at six and then have the regular meeting at seven or seven thirty?
That's fine.
Doesn't make a difference time of day, but.
It's okay.
Attorney.
I mean, when everyone to be here.
Are you talking with July, July thirty?
August eleventh.
August eleventh.
They could probably do it by zone. Even up there.
Can we do a non-meeting by zone?
The non-meeting, your rules are different.
Right, it's a non-meeting.
All right. Does anyone have anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?